Hi David.
Janet, Janet, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Now we got people coming on.
Hello, everybody. Happy spring.
Yeah.
Good evening. Happy spring to you too.
Thank you. Seems feels good, doesn't it? Good for the soul.
Yes.
How are you holding up Janet?
Um, barely.
You look good.
Thank you, because I was told yesterday that the bags under my eyes were out of control.
Oh, no. Well, don't.
You gotta love honest coworkers.
Don't believe it.
How are you? You've been out to camp yet?
I'm sorry?
Have you been out to camp yet?
No, hopefully tomorrow.
Great.
I think the next few days are going to be nice as well.
Yeah, out here in Woodbury, we lost a lot of snow today.
Did you? Good, good.
Yeah, so Greensboro is probably looking pretty good too.
I hope so. I hope we can rake. Hi, Michael. Raylene.
Howdy, folks.
Hello.
Oh, it's five thirty, right?
Magic.
I can, I can observe that there are enough of us here to have a quorum. So I'm calling this meeting of the Berry City Planning Commission to order at five thirty. All right. First up, do we have any adjustments to the agenda this evening? Okay, taking it. That's a no. All right, we can move on to the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at our minutes from February? All right. Are there any changes that we need to make to this round? Okay, all right, sounds good. We have a motion to approve those minutes then. All right, that's. I guess I think David was moving with his hand. Is that a?
I wa- I was.
Okay, great. Yeah, was there, was there somebody seconding?
I was gonna make a motion, but I was late, so I'll second.
All right, Joe, second, got a motion and a second. This, all in favor, you can raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I can't see Raylene or, yeah.
When I turn my video on, my sound goes away for some reason.
Okay, that's okay. Audio is fine, but I just couldn't hear or see you.
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, that is unanimous. And so our minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is our public comment. It appears that we have no members of the public here. So I think we can move along. All right, under our new business, first, we have an update from Janet on our grants, which, yeah, we've got two approved grants. And I'm sure there's more I don't know about, actually. And maybe, can you touch on the TOD thing, or is that not actually enough of a real thing yet? I understand that there was something in the works for the transit oriented development. So.
Yeah, Michael is correct. There's, there has been a lot of grants approved and in the works still for the city of Berry. Specifically, as Michael said, both the grants that we looked at and I applied for last fall were awarded at our asking price. Yay, people, we're gonna be real busy.
The. It's great, Janet.
Yeah, it is. It's great for us. There's a lot going on, and I think, I think the powers that be recognize that people are passionate, they're, they just want to see things keep going. The, so the Bylaw Modernization Grant, which was for twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-seven, five, is to update our zoning based on the housing. And that was awarded in January, and I have the RFP done and ready to be looked at. I want to get it out the door by the twentieth, by next week, hopefully. So we'll, we'll coordinate, looking and seeing and commenting. That will be helpful. The other grant that we applied for was the Municipal Planning Grant. We asked for eighteen thousand dollars to update our North Main to Summer Street Plan. If you recall, that's in our, in the municipal plan, is to be readdressed, updated. So we got full asking price there, and I am almost done with that RFP. I finished that today. So again, planning commission is going to be really busy. It's really exciting. There's a lot going on. You may or may not be aware, the city's been granted Sanders earmark money, so now we're in the process of literally applying to US Rural Development for the money awarded to the odd. So it's an award of money and then an application to actually get to the money. It's a two-step process, but three, over three million was awarded at the odd. We've got money for a pipeline on Route three oh two. I believe, Michael, you were referring to the, the grant that Bill applied for at the suggestion of TAC?
No, no, I think that the, I don't know if anything happened with that. What I was thinking of. I did it, which the.
Pretty sure that's one of the things that was ratified under consent agenda Tuesday night, but I, I might be confusing that with something else.
I think it might, I think the thing that was on consent agenda was a, it's a statewide effort to create transit oriented development. And I don't remember the details of it. It's possible David has more in his brain about it. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but he emailed me about it when, when it first came up, and I sent back a salty email that was just like, why are they putting the cart before the horse kind of thing? And you know, I, yeah, it's, the, the perfect is the enemy of the good. That's what I, I try to remind myself. But anyway, I, I thought that was what was up on the consent agenda, and I don't, I don't actually know what the details of it are.
So I, well, I'm not sure either. I knew know that there was a grant that Bill applied for, for a study on South Main Street, so that was awarded.
Hey, I.
Or a hundred thousand, I'm not sure.
Know that, that is fantastic.
Yay.
The detail, the details of that one is that we're trying to get a study for, for doing a complete street treatment of South Main Street to make it a better way for people to get to Spalding. So it's like connecting from downtown to Spalding better is the, is the idea.
So it was awarded, so.
Hey, I didn't, I didn't know that. That's pretty cool. I don't know. Now, now it's gotta get done, I guess, right?
That's right. And the only reason that I knew about it was as I, I happened to speak with Bill briefly last week, and he, fun, very funny said to me, oh, I probably should have told you, this is what I was applying for. I don't know what's gonna happen when I retire in July, if it will fall to you or fall to Brian. So it's all in the works. So, but you got a grant nonetheless. It's exciting. It's good stuff.
Our, our application for that one was extremely minimal and notional. And so I didn't imagine that that would happen. And so I'm, I'm, I think people are thinking fondly of Barry. That's my, that's my impression. And hey, that's great. Now we're, now we're gonna deliver on it. So they'll think fondly of us in the future too.
How much was it? Do you remember?
Boy, I wanna say sixty, this, maybe sixty thousand.
I, I do not, I don't remember, but I think the, the idea for that one is it's a scoping study to identify what's possible. And then once, so like, the way, which, I forget, I forget which funding stream that one is, but the way that it works is there's two things you can apply for. You can apply for them to do some planning work to get things in order for you, or you can apply for a big chunk of change, like up to three hundred thousand dollars to actually do it. And we didn't have enough, you know, done to apply for something or just like, yeah, let's do this project. But it seemed like all of the projects that were winning in other years were ones that had previously done the scoping study. And I was like, hey, let's do the scoping study, and then that'll queue us up for getting it next time. So, you know, it's, it's slower than we'd like. We'd love to see it like just happen, but you know, this is how we, you know, keep moving the boulder, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that was actually on the council's consent agenda on March twenty eighth. Vtrans Transportation Alternatives Grant.
Wow, yeah.
For walkable, bikeable routes to school project. So they ratified it on March twenty eighth and forty-eight thousand dollars with a twelve thousand dollar local share. So a grant. Project cost for engineering and design is sixty thousand. Grant request is forty-eight thousand from Vtrans with a city match of twelve. So, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't read all of the city council agendas, I have to admit. Maybe I should.
I have a quick question for the minutes. Is that Bill Ahern? So, okay, thank you. Just wanna make it, make a note of the full name there. That's all. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. There's one more grant related thing, which is not, it's, it's, it's like, you know, partly in the planning commission's like umbrella. The last year, and I, I know I mentioned this, at the time, CVRPC got funding and approved a project to do a study for traffic calming on Berlin Street between Route sixty-two and Main Street. But they couldn't get anybody to respond to their RFP at the time. And so it, it went away, but they did not give up on it. They put it in their budget for this year. And they're doing a new RFP that has a slightly bigger budget for the same project. So, you know, that's, and that hasn't, we don't do any of that. That's like CVRPC, like, you know, they get the money, they do the work, but they give us the deliverables.
So ironically, I got an email from the Transportation Planner at CVRPC on Wednesday, yesterday, saying that Barry's, when we as the city had expressed an interest in this, we're on their list of being interested municipalities. So he said Vtrans has released the twenty-twenty-three Bike and Ped Grant Application. So there's an informal meeting on May third, which I'll go to, to see what that's about. Probably get Brian to go. So I don't know if that's the same as what you were talking about, Michael.
It's, it's a different thing, totally different thing.
Okay.
And, yeah, the, if we, I feel like we don't have the bandwidth to like do everything. But if we did want to cue something up for that, to the thing, the thing that I've been trying to, to push is, you know how in our plan, we have the comprehensive bike and pedestrian plan for the city is one of our, one of our goals. I, I feel like, you know, getting that, you know, checked off would be a really, you know, really big deal, because we have a hard time focusing resources, because we don't have a plan of like, you know, what are the crucial routes? That, you know, it just, it's always been a little vague. Anyway, yeah, can't do it all, right? But, uh, well, we'll do it all eventually. Uh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't have anything else for that. More actually came out of that one than I expected. I was thinking we were just gonna talk about the two, the two grants that we tried to, tried to kick off. Anybody, anybody have anything to, to add or any questions? Yeah, David, go ahead.
Just a question, the, the, the zoning update relating to housing, I think is a big deal. I think it's going to be a little bit of a challenge just because of what's going on in the legislature is going to end up shaping. If it goes through or what goes through a lot of the decisions we might have to make or that a, that a planner might look at or might shape what, what they look at relative to things. You know, so as an example, I'm pretty sure it wouldn't happen, but in theory, if, if a four unit, if every house could be a four unit house in the city of Berry, because there's water and sewer, that would be a huge impact. And perhaps, you know, even if they're allowed, there needs to be some, you know, that come that rolls back to parking, that rolls back to, you know, a whole, a whole bunch of things. And I'm not suggesting that it's necessarily a bad idea, but it just, that, that's an example of something that would change the way we have to think through the, the changes to the zoning ordinance.
Well, fortunately, I expect the consultants will probably, you know, have, you know, whispering, you know, legislature in their ear, sort of, so to speak. They'll, you know, they'll have a hunch on what's coming down the pike.
Of course, the other thing is that by the time we have a consultant on, online, if anything's gonna come out of the legislature this year, it will already have happened. So we'll know. But who knows what's gonna come out of the legislature with this now? Maybe, maybe Representative Anthony knows now, but I guess it's gone from the Senate to the House anyhow.
Way, way too early.
Ah, you're here. I didn't realize. And did anybody else have any, anything to add or questions? All right, well, if not, then we can, we can move on to five two, do a new business. And so on these things they say consider really like, obviously, we don't have anything to like, consider making a motion on. But what I wanted was to sort of, you know, things that have come by and passing, we can start, you know, looking at like, you know, what would, you know, making a change in any of these places entail? So anyway, yeah, so I think we mentioned once in one meeting, conditions for demolition. The question was, couldn't we make demolition conditional in the entire city? And that would mean it would go, you know, if someone wanted to do a demolition, it would go to the Development Review Board. I sent out an email not very long before the meeting, which I'm sorry about that. But it was just drawing attention to which sections of the development ordinance, we, thank you. Sorry about these titles. I just grabbed some random thing. They look a little intense. But in any case, the general exemptions section, it's on page three of the ordinance. I forget which page of PDF it is. But of, of my PDF, it's two. But anyway, the section eleven oh one A, there's a, an exemption here that says everything outside of these overly districts doesn't have to, doesn't have to follow the rules that are expressed otherwise. So what I, what I think the question was before was, if we removed this section, what would the impact be? Would we then have? Yeah, we, we'd then have demolitions that would have to go through an approval process with the DRB. And I'll let Janet jump in, I think, not to. I'm assuming that Janet would be the first person to have something to add.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, my girls went to the top of my screen.
Yeah, I, I was, I was struggling also, because I was trying to be like, I wanna see everybody's faces and the screen share, and I was, I was like, yeah, anyway. So.
Yes. No, Michael is a hundred percent correct. Demolition becomes really tough when, you know, people come in and they wanna tear down their garages, and they don't want to tear down their sheds. But if you recall, last year, the house that came down on Maple leaves a big gaping hole. I could not find any way to stop that demolition, even if the house was full of asbestos. And Hud said the house had to come down because they were holding the, the note on it. We, the city, had no means to stop that and force any kind of rehabilitation. What has happened now is because that lot is somewhat narrow, everybody that's looked at it doesn't like the setbacks because they can't build the size house they want to put in there. So we've got ourselves into a corner where we allowed demolition, but then is it the setback's fault or is it the demolition's fault? It's, it's really hard when you see somebody come in and they have the ability to get the authority to demolish and, and the staff have no way to stop it. Like Michael said, otherwise, unless it's in the Design Review District.
Yeah, David, go ahead.
You're still muted, David.
Sorry about that. I, I'm not convinced if this is necessary to do, but I think maybe it should be part of the zoning review. But my concern would be if a demolition permit wasn't granted for that property, that does not mean it's going to be rehabilitated. In fact, it might mean that it, that nothing happens to it for the next twenty-five years, because it's not rehabhabilitatable. And we're not letting somebody remove it unless they have some other plan for something to do with it. So I think it's a, a kind of a slippery slope. And I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I'm not, I'm also not convinced it's necessarily a good idea.
Yeah, removing it would prohibit demolition. It would just mean that the DRB would have to rule on it. Amanda, go ahead.
You may have actually just answered, sorry, I've got a nice little spring cold right now. You may have just answered my question, which was going to be, making all demolition conditional doesn't necessarily mean that demolition is stopped. It simply means that they have to make an argument for it in front of the DRB, which my follow-on question then becomes, what are we providing to the DRB as like a framework for them to decide on demolition?
I'll pretend that Janet is raising her, there you, you are actually. I just got ahead of you. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, great points, both David and Amanda. You hit the nail on the head. So the city also has the vacant building ordinance, right? But that's all by outward appearances, because city staff can't trespass on a vacant building site. We've run into this with the St. Monica's Appeal. It didn't look too bad on the outside, but apparently the inside of that tiny little vacant house is just covered in mold allegedly, and we have no control over what goes on on the inside. So I agree that, that I, I don't know how, I don't know what else we can come up with that says, you know, it has to be reviewed by the DRB, but what, what legs, what guardrails can we come up with to, to give them to actually be able to say yes or no?
Well, I mean, I remember when the DRB considered that, I mean, we, we were given the whole section of the ordinance that, you know, stated, you know, that set forward the rules for, you know, whether or not a demolition could be permitted. So I mean, I feel like the framework is there if you're in the Designer View or Historic Structures Overlay District. And it seemed like it worked okay, like the, the framework. It's just that we have, most of the city doesn't follow the framework at all. It just, it's like, well, if you wanna, you wanna demolish, then, then go for it. And for me, the, the reason, the reason for considering this isn't like nostalgia, or, you know, wishing that all buildings should continue to exist. But that, you know, most of the taxable value of the properties in the city are the structures. And so there's like, it's a perverse incentive where the owner has an incentive to get rid of structures that they don't like in order to pay less taxes. But the city then loses the revenue. And, you know, this is basically, everyone pays the cost of losing the structures. Now, I didn't see whose hands were up first. I think, I guess it's in, I think it's in order. So Amanda, go ahead.
Yeah, so my follow-on question with that understanding would be then if we were, the conditions could then be that the DRB would examine in order to grant a demolition permit, they could be just, we just say that they're the same as the Design Review District for demolition purposes. So just citywide instead.
Yeah, I think that that's what would happen without this text, right, Janet?
Absolutely. And it's, it's some pretty tough things to meet. I can pull up section twenty-two oh two G if you'd like. And so you all can see the parameters by which the DRB is, is supposed to judge an application for demolition on. Would you like me to do that? Couple nods, three nods, okay?
Yeah, go for it.
I'll do that. Bear with me. I will.
Becky, did you want to put your hands down? So, all right.
Oh, well, so this might partially answer my question, but I, so I was trying to get this up. So that's really helpful, Janet. My other question was going to be, what is the vacant building ordinance say or do, like broadly speaking? I'm not familiar with that one.
Admittedly speaking, it says that a vacant house must look as if it were occupied. And our discussions with code enforcement, I feel like it needs, this needs to be improved. I think the vacant building ordinance can be updated even more now.
Okay. I guess I'm still trying to understand what problem we're trying to solve. I think that's, that's like fundamentally where my questions are coming from is like, what's the problem?
Uh, the other, uh, I'll, I'll take this one. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if everyone has the same sense of it. The, we were approaching this from a, a housing perspective, and so one of the ways that we can improve, increase the housing supply is to, you know, make sure development rules are allowing the, you know, the construction of new housing that is gonna meet demand. But the other side of it is to, to stop getting rid of housing that would, that would be available for people to live in, because somebody wants to do something that is, you know, it's like a less valuable use. And so the, the reason, I think the thing that started this one rolling most prominently was demolition of an apartment building adjacent to the Brook Street School. Does they wanted to have expanded parking? And it's not a big building. It was, was it three or four units? I can't, I can't remember. But it's sort of a, you know, the Development Review Board had to permit it. Because it's, I mean, they, rather, the Development Review Board was not allowed to consider whether or not it was a good idea to demolish the building. The Development Review Board took it up because they just had to look at the placement of the parking lot inside of the repairian. Like, it was, it, it making sure that it was in the right place relative to the stream. And so the solution here, or rather, the problem here is there's not a way to say, hey, Berry City has an overriding interest in making sure that, you know, that residential buildings are not, are not torn down. And so that's, that's the fundamental thing. And then the question is, how do we do it? Like, what's the best way to get to an outcome that still allows the demolition of buildings that are done? So I mean, some, some buildings are just used up. And I have not been on the Development Review Board very long, but it does seem like there's a recognition of permitting demolition is feasible when you can, when you look at it and say like, oh, yeah, right, that half that, you know, it, there's no way to sell it. But one of the, one of the rules for for permitting demolition is that the owner has to have shown that they have tried to preserve the building. They have tried to, you know, make it work for them. They've tried to, you know, like, find a person who would use it. And so I feel like it is actually, sorry, yeah, Janet actually found all these things. So I'm gonna stop talking now, because I think I answered your question. And, and now Janet can talk about the, you know, the rules that, that exist for the Designer View.
No, you, you are right on track, Michael.
But it's not my, it's not my place. Yeah.
A through F is, is what the applicant has to prove to the DRB, why, why they need to tear it down. A, B, C, this is all that it wa- it's really what it, what it boils down to. I can tell you in the past when the owner of the Clark's Feed Store, if some of you remember where that is, where some of you knew her to the city, that is literally the parking lot that is behind the parking lot of City Hall. There used to be an old feed store there. They had to prove financially why they could not, why it didn't make sense to renovate the building. The cost to renovate. Um, the cost to renovate versus the cost to uh demolish. And what worked for the applicant's favor was um underground contamination as well. So that parking lot acts as a cap to that uh underground plume. Um, doesn't, that's not always the scenario. Um, the D R B two years ago, I, two years ago, maybe, uh, heard. An applicant who wanted to take down the. The L N M diner right after it burned and he was denied twice because he did not prove. A through F. And um, so it sat there vacant to uh Amanda David's point. It sat there vacant. Looked kind of cruddy. Uh, we finally have somebody who's going to eventually turn it into something else, but. One A through F really is is what we have in place at the moment.
Uh, thanks. Um, Rosemary, sorry to make you wait for so long.
No, no problem. No, it's it's been interesting for sure. Um. I do back to the, your initial comments about the house that was torn down and involved with uh HUD. So HUD has the authority to do, to to make that decision. I just wanted to be, I wanted to be clear on how that happened.
That was their, that was the reason why they thought it needed to come down. Anybody could have come to me of authority owning that property and said, I want to apply to demolish that building. And there's not a heck of a lot that prevents us from doing that.
And they were the owner.
So.
Right.
Right. Say that again.
They were the owner. That's why they.
The, is there any word? I don't know if we want to get into this. Uh, on the Bonacorsi site, you're talking about the parking lot where the feed store was. I'm just wondering if we're in a similar situation. There. With contamination, do you know? That's all I have, thanks.
Alright, great. Yeah, I was gonna say we should hold off on that because it's not, uh, you know, it's not on this, uh, this exact topic. But, uh, David, go ahead.
Personally, I I think this is a little bit. Over overdoing it for places that are not in the design review district. And and I could see a property owner that owns a. House that says, you know, it could be renovated, but I don't have the money to do it. Nobody's gonna buy it from me. So I think I'll stop paying taxes and let the city own it. Uh, in a few years. And I just. Think we need to think it through. I'm I'm not comfortable with having these kind of requirements for for a private. Landowner. That's in, except in the design review district where we're, we're concerned about the overall kind of design and what, what's in the historic district. I'm just, I'm just uneasy with this.
Um, uh, Rosemary, is your hand up again, or? No, no, it's okay. It's fine. I just wanted to check. Um, uh, yeah, Amanda, go ahead.
Uh, kind of a, kind of a Janet question or or maybe a Michael question as well. Do we have any comps of other municipalities in Vermont that uh have conditional only demolition? That might inform us whether people are taking some of the like worst case scenarios that that David is describing? Um, that's what I just wrote down is to start looking at what uh some of the other um equally sizable communities are doing. Um, something to look at for sure.
Yeah, and I definitely don't know what the, you know, what the right thing to do is. Uh, I was only. Using this as a starting point to say we have this, you know, uh, right here, this is the section that is causing the problem that we're observing. Uh, it's quite possible, as David is saying, that removing it is going to create bigger problems. Um, but yeah, that I think today we don't need to decide anything. I just wanted to to use this as a way to like to, you know. Um, look at a problem. And the specific part of the ordinance and say. We probably have an opportunity to make this better. But I think, um, having Janet look at what, you know, what kind of solutions are there? Cause we can, you know, we'll get a lot further. In a future discussion when we have like a proposed change to consider. So I think right now all we have is, you know, the text and, uh, you know, some thinking about it. But if we, uh, if we get that for next time, then we'll be a lot further along. Uh, yes, Janet, go ahead.
And and I think that we could very easily roll this conversation into um our housing and updates. For our um. Ordinance. Uh, I I think it's a, it's a simple marriage of conversations as well. Um, but I I do appreciate hearing opinions, hearing what people think, what they see, what they know, what they don't know. Um. It's it's just good to hear.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Amanda.
I I I totally um see David's concerns and obviously like I think. Exactly what Janet is suggesting is the right path, that it goes to a consultant who's able to sort of give us some comps and look at some of these scenarios. But I am generally, I do generally like the path of making it harder to to demolish buildings, both. For um the reasons, Michael, that you cited, that it does remove a portion of the city's tax base and that. There isn't, there's an out there and um. Just from my personal, I think we should be trying to save buildings whenever we possibly can, not make it easier for people to just to bring something down. And like wash their hands of it. Um. And like, again, like making it conditional doesn't necessarily mean that they can't look around and go, yeah, that 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 building is just, as Michael says, it's just done. It's it's burned out or it this, that, or the other thing. And all of those cases, like absolutely let the poor thing go, but. Where it's like right on the line of, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna yank it and. Like maybe make the yard so I don't have to deal with that for a little while feels, feels like something we should be trying to discourage.
Joe?
Um. Yeah, so one thing I was curious, so to Janet's point about like these standards, you know, this, these A through F in twenty two O two G, in the case of the L N M. How that caused problems, is it? Is it sort of within this discussion to consider adjusting those those standards? Um. And then kind of as a follow up to that, sort of to David's point, even if we leave. Those alone for the designer review board, would it be? Um. Would it be worth considering coming up with a, maybe a less restrictive version of them for outside the review board, rather than sort of applying everything across the whole city?
Um, uh, it, so specifically in the case, uh, Joe of the L N M diner, they just did not. They didn't like. Similar to uh Saint Monica's Parish, they didn't take a stab really at A through E. And um, that's on them. They, they, if they can't do the homework and present a reasonable reason, I think it's pretty simple for the D R B to say. Doesn't pass the test. It, we can't say yes to this, so, um. It surely would be nice to come up with, as as all of you so far have said. Um, a standard that applies to everywhere else, so to speak. Um. Maybe not make it so easy to say yes.
And that's sort of what I was going in the direction of, so.
Uh, yeah, my feeling is, uh, definitely we have the ability to, you know, to consider whether these are the right conditional, your criteria. Uh, did anybody else have anything on, uh? This item? Alright, if not, we can go on to our next one, uh, five, three, which is uh parking lots as a, as a primary use. So the idea here is we, and included is just our use tables. There's nothing specific in there to uh to to learn from, I don't think. Um. But just to remind ourselves that we have. Primary uses for lots and then in all of our districts, we have whether or not they are prohibited, uh, permitted or conditional. Or conditional with, you know, under, under certain circumstances or et cetera. Um, yeah, yeah, so. My thought here is at the very least, we should have parking lot be added as a primary use. Um. And then it would, I, the the ordinance currently says you can't make. How has it? There's places we can't make any parking lots, right? I actually can't. Maybe that's not true. I can't, I actually. Yeah, okay, yeah, and yeah, right in the downtown. Um, and so there were some places where we probably would have an X right away because, you know, our downtown maps to say UC one and UC two. Um. Yeah, but then we would have this, uh. We would then have the ability to consider whether or not we wanted to make them, uh, you know, parking lot as the primary is, which is to say a lot that is just parking. Uh, a parcel, uh, that's by the lot, I mean, um. And, uh. You know, we, do we want those to be controlled in some kind of way to say like, you know, if it's conditional, what conditions does it need to meet? Um. Uh, that's, that's basically it, but it it seems to me at the very least, we should have it as a use so that we have a way to talk about, um. The creation of parking lots. Any, any thoughts or questions, or is it too, uh, okay, Becky, go for it.
So how does someone create a parking lot now if it's not a primary use? Is, does it have to be associated to something else?
I think that it, they just do it because there's no, uh, yeah, Janet, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, I I, if I mean to, I didn't mean to cut you off, Michael. The parking lot is considered an accessory use of a primary structure. So in the cases where someone just wants to take raw land and make a parking lot, we have a section. In the zoning that says this is how you build it. This is where you can be from the property lines. You have to pave it, you have to stripe it if it's ten spaces or more. ADA requirements, landscaping requirements starts to make it a little bit more difficult. Um, so if you recall, when the Dunkin' Donuts on North Main Street came down next to Northfield Savings Bank. Um. I uh told them they couldn't do it and I was emphatically wrong. Um, I was informed by several legal individuals that parking lots are uh accessory uses. To a primary structure. Um, and I think it's use, uh, and it's even considered a structure. Um, so there was no way that I could say no to that one in the downtown, cause I was going. It's in the downtown. They, they can't do it. They have to save the building and I was very wrong. So if you want to take a bare piece of land and make it a parking lot. And it's A, not in the downtown, you follow the standard. If it is in the downtown, it's got to be an accessory to a primary. Otherwise, it's not allowed. So anywhere else in the city, you can create a parking lot if you meet the ordinance sections.
It sounds like there's sort of a loophole now in that you can. Use a, you can have a parcel's primary use be a parking lot, but but describe it as accessory. Is that, that was, is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, they went and merged the property, so it it. I was very wrong. Um, north, that that parking lot became an accessory used to the primary structure because it became all one parcel. If it stayed separate and it was owned by somebody else, they would have a harder time passing that test. For sure.
Right, and I think that the, in that, yeah, it, this change, adding it as a use wouldn't have no impact on that. Because as soon as, I mean, if you, if you're allowed to merge the lots, then it becomes, it's not the primary use of the pa- the property. I didn't realize that they had merged the um the parcels before that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what would making parking lots a primary use allow us to do that we can't do now?
Well, right now, what we do is, like Janet was saying, we have a lot of conditions on how you make them. Um, it would give us the ability to say whether you make them as, you know, as, so if it's, if it's the entire parcel. And so, I mean, I don't know, yeah, I feel like there's probably some wiggle room in terms of, uh. The entire parcel, like if you have a very small shed and you have mostly parking lot, probably you could make, you know. It 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 might not pass the sniff test to say that the parking lot is an accessory there. Um, but I, I I don't know how that gets worked out. Um. But what was I gonna say? It it gives us, it gives us an ability to um to say. Just making a parking lot on this parcel is against the rules or you have to meet these criteria somehow.
So to further complicate it and make you grow your eyebrows even more is. We have standards that require X amount of parking based on the use. So the minimum number of parking spaces, exactly as Michael said, it it, it doesn't dilute it. It makes it a little bit more concentrated, a little bit more difficult. Um. So.
So could I just say what I think you just told me to make sure I understand? So right now, outside of the historic district. If I've got land, anybody's got land and they want to turn it into a parking lot, as long as they meet the conditions that are laid out. Have at it. And making parking lots a primary use within these tables would allow us to say. Oh, you can't build that parking lot there if you don't meet. Certain requirements. That basically what we're saying.
That's exactly it.
Fantastic. Okay, I support that. That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, you know, the, the difficult thing is figuring out where to put our Xs and Ps and and Cs. Um. Because it might not be immediately obvious where, you know, where it should be prohibited or something, but I think, you know, we can take that one step at a time. We say we want to have a row for parking and then we look at each district and, um. I feel like we done, we did case studies at the, sort of, where we were like, you know, here's the thing like this when we were originally making this table. Um, but it was so long ago, yeah.
Most five years now, once we, when we got started.
Yeah, right?
As I'm getting to the civic and community section of Michael's handout and you'll see. Uh, those are things owned by the cities and governments and and those kind of things. We, we don't have something that helps or strengthens. Parking. In lots.
Oh, I I didn't hear everything you just said. There was a little bit of, uh, like interference or something.
Yeah, sorry. Um, I was just pointing out on the screen. That under the civic and community section of our use table. I would think a parking lot would go in this section, well, not necessarily, because it could be a private parking lot. Um. Anyway, my point was, we don't even have a parking lot as a primary use, even under municipal. And institutional type uses.
Yeah, it's true. I was, uh, the reason that I started. The, the reason that I put this on my to do list to talk about someday was because I was looking through the use table and I was like. Hang on a second, how is this possible? So my, my feeling is it's just an oversight. Um. And that we can fix it. Uh, it's just a question of, you know, like. We'll, uh, we'll have to do a little bit of like, you know, thought experimenting to figure out, you know, what, uh, you know. Yeah, like I was saying, what letters put in which columns? But I think that. I think it seems pretty clear that we need the row someplace because we want to have a way for the ordinance to talk about that use. Uh, you know, I mean, other than like how to build it, I want to say like, where is it, where is it permitted and how is it permitted? Um, yeah, did, uh, anybody else have any, uh, thoughts or questions on that? I saw there was, uh, there's stuff in the chat, but I didn't actually look at the, um, let's see. Uh. Okay, yeah. I I was just, uh, just. Okay, uh, um. Peter said, uh, said, said something and I was, you know, just, uh, just reading through it, but I think, I think we may have addressed those things in the discussion. Um. Okay, he's not good. Um. Alright, if there's a, there's nothing else on this one, I think that what we'll do is we'll come back with, uh. The, 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 the goal will be to do a little bit of legwork to, um. Just imagine like, well. You know. Here are some cases that would, you know, would impact like, say, you know, a parking lot in like R sixteen district or something and say like, what is it, you know? What does it mean to do this? And then we can look at that, you know, look at that row in more detail and at some. What does it mean to do this? And then we can look at that, you know, look at that row in more detail and at some point decide how to put that in. We'll come back to it. Alright, I'm not seeing anything from anybody, so we can go on to, uh, five, four. Which is, uh, parking minimums, you know, this is one that I've been, uh, I've, I've been, I've been pushing on for a while and, uh. And again, this might be, you know, the, the, yeah, th- this is possibly one of those things where, you know, we discussed it in our previous meeting. It might be, uh, a place where the legislature, you know, um, lays down some, um. Some guardrails for us, um, but at the very least, I think we can, we can look at what is currently required. My, my ideal is that we take out all of the things that say you must have this many parking spaces. Because I think fundamentally, um, either three, oh, three, one, oh, four, three, one, oh, four dot A, one. Uh, ensure that development provides adequate off-street parking and loading areas to avoid congestion on surrounding streets. I think that that's actually just a wrong goal, that that is not something that benefits the city as a whole and it's, it. Like that's, I, I feel like is the, the sort of fundamental flaw of how we're managing parking is that we have that as one of our priorities, because. If there's congestion of parking on the streets, I mean, I feel like that's kind of, um, like. It seems appropriate, that like, you know, if there's a free resource that is desirable to use, it's likely that people will like use it to its capacity. And so if there's a, you know. If our goal is to make sure that there's residential parking available, I mean, most cities do that by having like a permitting system of some kind. Where you have an area that says you've gotta be, you know, have your residential parking permit or something. Uh, but anyway, I'm gonna stop talking. Anybody else can, uh. You know, can, can weigh in here? Uh, Amanda, go ahead.
I'm just, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking too that. Parking off-street, parking on-street doesn't even necessarily create congestion in most berry streets, they're plenty wide enough. In many, many streets, not all, but many of the streets, um, for people to pass, drive through freely at a reduced speed. Which is obvious, I consider an improvement, uh, but still, uh. Not necessarily like severe congestion, um, I would also say that. I, I mean, I know I brought this up before in these meetings, but I don't feel comfortable making these changes un- until and unless we have some kind of year-round. On-street parking solution, um, because. Then otherwise we're, this is a very regressive kind of thing in that folks who, who. Aren't able to, to park off-street for some reason are, are punished by the city for, for that. So I would like us to have some kind of, um, I don't disagree that, that, that this should, that the language there I find problematic as well. But I, um, I think this needs to be tied together with, uh, with that complete perspective, uh, on ability to park in Berry City. Tie it into that year-round parking ability on-street.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I think that it's very hard to move forward with, uh, you know, with this, if you, if you imagine that the, uh. Street parking is something that's available for only like, you know, like, uh, seven twelves for the year. Uh, it's not quite that, I guess. Yeah, yeah, but I think on the other hand, it's something that will change slowly. Because, you know, the parking, the off-street parking already exists. And it would be only, you know, only new development would, uh, be creating greater, greater demand for the, the off-street parking. Or the on-street parking, I should say. Um, did, uh, anybody else? Uh, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, you know, another thing about the parking, if we can deal with the winter, uh, issue. Is it could have an impact because it could allow properties that are currently one or two family. To have more units or a multifamily to have more units because they don't have to create parking spaces on the property where they can't. Make it happen. So it actually would have a pretty significant impact in, in that way.
Yeah, and that's, that's the real motivation for this, um, it's to, uh, to remove one of the constraints on adding housing units. Um, and also to reduce the cost of the housing units, because when we, we require them to have parking spaces, we're adding. Extra expense to, you know, uh, uh. To homeowners, renters, to say like, you have to do this thing whether you want to or not. Janet meant, oh, sorry, maybe Janet's gonna say what I was gonna say, go, go ahead, Janet.
No, no, I just wanted to piggyback onto what both you and David have said is, is, um, uh, chronically when, um. People complain to my office that there's, uh, not adequate parking, off-street parking. They just want to be able to park on the front lawn and you recall, we revised the zoning. That says you can't park in front of the principal line of the building and, um, I've had some pretty irate individuals. Um, who own multifamily buildings just. Want me to solve their parking problem and I do what I can. Reducing the minimum. As you all know, won't take away people, families having six and seven cars, I mean, deceitious of course, but. Um, a multifamily building seems to have a multitude of cars these days, um. Will have to. Thoroughly think this one through. For sure.
Yeah, I agree, uh, David, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, parking lot or no, I go out walking and see plenty of cars just parked in the front lawn. Especially in the winter, they just pull in the driveway and pull right in front of the porch on the lawn and by this time of year, it's a muddy mess. So it's not, you know, it's happening anyhow. I don't know, you know, if it's something to be enforced or not, but it just, you know, it's happening.
The, um. I forget what his, what his, uh, sort of, um, specialty is, uh, Corporal Frey from the. Police Department, um, actually it's Fry, sorry, he says, it says Fry, is it, you know, it's spelled Frank, so, anyway. Uh, Corporal Fry, uh, was telling me that there is actually a way to enforce this, not through the city's ordinance, but through, um, application of state statute. So there, it's a, uh, it's a moving violation to drive across a, um, a pedestrian area. So if you're going, except where there's a driveway. So basically, uh, there is a way to enforce it, um, and there's a, there's a reason that you're not allowed to do it and that's for safety. That, uh, I mean, like, we want to have sidewalks be someplace that people aren't driving. Um, and that, I mean, that's why there are curb cuts and there are, you know, there are rules on how close together the curb cuts.
Well, I'm just saying people drive on the driveway, but there's not enough spot for everybody, so they.
Ah, yeah.
Drive into the driveway and then turn onto the front lawn.
Yeah, that is, that's an interesting.
Maybe, maybe it's just an unusual thing I'm seeing, but I see enough of it.
No, it's true, there's definitely a lot of that, um, we, I think we would have to make a change to the ordinance if we were interested in, uh, in controlling for that. Cause I don't think, I mean, you're not allowed to create a parking area. Under the ordinance, um, but there's nothing that, you know, there's no, um, there's no violation for parking in a non-designated area. So, but I feel like this is not really a planning commission concern, that thing, um, but, uh. You know. It seems to me like it's a worthwhile, uh, thing for, you know, um, for, for the, uh. Which ordinance would that even be? I don't know. Parking ordinance, I don't know.
Why, we don't have one.
I, I forget that there's, there's a. It's not the, probably not streets, there's a, there's something that has a parking section in it, right? Yeah, just streets.
Yeah, it could be streets or sidewalks or, um. Miscellaneous, uh, section, one of those.
Right. Uh, yeah, so we, we can't, we can't solve all the problems through, uh, through planning, it's true. But I think that it is good that we've created rules that specify that. You need to put your, you know, need to put vehicles, uh, not directly in front of the building, cause it increases, uh, you know, increases the, uh. Vitality of the streetscape, which is good for property values and, uh, there's also this thing, quality of life, which I understand is important to residents. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a good thing. My brain turned off, I'm sorry, I don't. Um, oh yes, parking minimums, if they, going back to, um. Yeah, that, I think that taking the pressure off of, um. Uh, rather, making all-around parking on the street. Will take the pressure off to some extent for, um, you know, some of the like parking outside of designated parking areas. And I'd much rather do it by addressing like the demand side of it than going for like a punitive approach. What, oh, what I was gonna say is that, um, Janet mentioned in a previous meeting that the city's, uh, parking committee. Uh, it came up, they're, they're talking about approaches to try to, um, allow year-round parking on the streets. And, um, I checked with Bill Aaron and he, uh, he confirmed that it was a plan to try to pilot that this year. But that they just didn't have the time or the resources to make it happen, but they are planning to do it for. The upcoming year, starting in, you know, starting at the beginning of the, um. The beginning of the parking ban and they're, the pilot is to focus on three areas. Uh, the idea that there'll be like, you know, three sort of kinds of street that they wanna see what the impact of it is on. So hopefully, that will happen and, uh, the Transportation Advisory Committee, uh, was unanimous in favor of, yeah, go do that. So, um, so, so there's motion in terms of getting the, uh, an alternative to the winter parking ban. But it's not exactly clear, maybe, it's not gonna happen next year. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, that's, it, it, speaking from someone who goes to that, um, meeting, um. We were concerned that if we just pulled the trigger and said, yep, we've destroyed this winter parking ban and we're gonna do this. That it could be mass pandemonium and Bill's main concern was how do you plow the streets when. People are so excited, they don't have to drive their car over here or be off the street from, what is it, midnight to six? So, as Michael explained, three target areas to see how it works and. Maybe by a year from this fall, we could be in full sway. I grew up in an area where, uh, parking was every other side of the street, given the day and. You know, cars are faced one direction on one, one side of certain days and going the other way, so. It can be done, it certainly can be done, it's, it's just a huge change for a, a little city who's been so conditioned. To removing cars off the street.
Right. And I think that is the approach that Mupelia currently has, right, the alternate sides.
I think someone said that's where they landed, yes.
Not sure if it's city-wide, but at least in some streets. Well, oh, go ahead, Becky.
Um, I think my question is, if we were to get rid of the parking minimums. Before all of that was figured out, like, is there that much development happening in the city? That it would have. Such an effect? Like there was concern, someone mentioned concern about like, that this would be regressive impact. And I'm just wondering, we already have all the parking that's already in place, that's not going away, that if we took away the minimums, is there that much? Development happening that we would be losing much-needed parking associated with that development?
My thought is no, but I think it's a, uh, we can't know what will happen. Um, and so that's what, what I was saying is that I think that there's, the development's not happening fast enough for it to be like a, you know, like, uh, like a, like a waterfall of, of change. But, uh, we, we can also, um. I mean, I can imagine that we could tie it to saying like, this will take effect once the winter parking ban is gone or something, if we were concerned about it. But I, I am not concerned about it because I think we will get rid of the winter parking ban, it's just a question of time. And the pace of, you know, uh, increasing demand for, uh, on-street parking is probably, uh, you know, I think it's not that great. Is what I'm, uh, you're greater than, than, you know, like, there's currently, there's currently demand which is thwarted. And I expect that it's gonna be like a little bit more demand which is thwarted and, and so on. Um, and that probably is not gonna be a, a dam break, but I, I, you know, I can't say that I know. Uh, Amanda, go ahead.
Um, so since it was, I, I had mentioned I was concerned about putting this in place with the winter parking ban, uh, because it could become a progressive policy, so. I, Becky, I think your point is, is well-made that, that. Like realistically, how much time between now and when, and when, um, there was a solution with the winter parking ban, how much new development would there be? I just, um, it doesn't feel like enough of a complete plan to me. May- maybe is more my, is more my concern, I would want, uh, more of a solution. In place rather than say, we're making this change. And waiting for the things that really need, we need, really need to make a complete, like, real solution for everyone. We're just waiting for those to catch up because we have a realistic expectation that it will catch up, even though we do have a realistic expectation, I don't, I, I personally don't quite feel comfortable. With sort of saying, yeah, like, it's not gonna be that much development, it's, it's true, there probably isn't, right? Um, but there's also nothing stopping, um, you know, a quick addition from. From making those changes and things like that, which is what we want in the long term, right, with, that we would love for like someone to add. A, a, an ADU or a wing to a multifamily dwelling that made more housing possible and then parking would just be on the street, but. I just don't, I don't want us to, to put someone in the situation of, of them being pushed out of a, of a home or anything like that. Because the parking situation is untenable. In the meantime, and I realize it's like only a year and, and that's, that's, that's one of my, it's one of those worst-case scenarios, but that's just what's in my mind.
Well, it would only be new units that would be impacted after all, I mean, like, really, uh, you know, removing a change wouldn't impact existing units at all.
Would it, sorry, quickly, would it be new or changed units, so could, and it would in addition then be?
Oh, yeah, I mean. Uh, you mean like, um. You mean like a- adding another dwelling unit?
No, I'm picturing a house and I'm picturing maybe a side parking lot on that house, if I built an addition to that house that was another. Like say I, I massively expanded a garage and made it into like two more apartments and took up. That had been a parking space, that would be great, there'd be potentially two new units there. Would that then, because it is a newly permitted piece? That would not have a parking minimum.
I think I was overlooking that case, yeah. Uh, David, I'm sorry to have gotten involved in a conversation instead of calling up, yeah, go ahead.
Um, no, I think Amanda makes a good point, but I, I think this is part of the overall zoning. Uh, changes, because for example, things like density. Um, will impact this, so if all of a sudden we're allowing. More units. On existing lots or allowing, uh, houses on very small lots to add units. Cause there's space in the building, um, this is all part of that same. Sort of picture and they all, they all impact each other in, in ways we can probably imagine, but maybe in ways we haven't even thought of yet.
Yeah, it is definitely true. Um, I don't know if everyone has seen it, but in the, in the chat, uh. Representative Anthony, uh, said to get rid of the calendar mandated parking ban when we started talking about this, so it's, um. But I, it, you know, that. It is a wish that many people have, obviously, so the question is, how do we, you know, how do we do that? Perhaps this is a thing that we, the, um. Sorry, so, uh, David, since you were mentioning, uh, changes to density affecting these limits. It's possible that this is something that we would be forced to consider in the, um, the bylaw modernization. Is it, or is that exactly what you were saying? And I just didn't, uh, I didn't hear it, right?
Both, that we might be forced to do it, but we might want to do it, uh, as we think about it to encourage more housing. So it might be our choice, might not be, but we'll have to deal with it.
Could I ask one more question?
Uh, yes, absolutely, go ahead.
How would you war minimums like, um, compared to other? Cities, for, you know, similar cities in Vermont. Like are we, i- is this just the standard that everybody follows or, or, yeah?
I don't know the answer to that one. Uh, did we look into a comparison? I don't think we did a comparison for this, did we, Janet?
No, we did not. You're correct, Michael. Um, yeah, I would not be comfortable at all saying I have any clue uh, what else is going on. Um, it certainly feels like this was a standard that was put in front of us by the consultant that was widely used uh as a template. I keep putting parameters on this um, at the time. But I couldn't begin to tell you what Montpelier does, Winuski, South Burlington, I have no idea.
Well, I will make a note to look into that and and see what the, you know, what the standards are. Um, because I, you know, I, I don't know. Um, I'm approaching this from a perspective of like, what's gonna work? And also, there's a, there's a big movement afoot in planning to, uh, you know, as, as expressed in that article that I shared with everyone from um Planning Magazine. Um, and so yeah, I, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking, uh, what's, what's going on in Vermont? No, uh, go ahead, Amanda.
There are municipalities that have removed parking minimums in Vermont. I want to say Burlington is considering.
Yeah, I thought so too, but I can't, I can't remember the details.
And there are, there are others that are considering it as well. And as, as we've discussed at previous meetings, I haven't seen S one hundred in a while, but at one point banning parking minimums was part of S one hundred. Which as Representative Anthony says, it's way too early to see what will finally come out of that situation. Um, but I, I agree with David, this is, this is something that we're going to have to actually make some kind of affirmative decision on sooner rather than later. And it might we're what, it's April twelfth, so we're a month away from April thirteenth, so we're a month away from legislative session closing. So then we'll have an answer of whether it's become state mandated or not. And then we'll have to sort of move from there, whichever way that directs us.
Uh, did anybody else have any, uh, anything to add, any questions? All right, well, um, yeah, I said I was gonna take a note. I didn't yet, so I'm just gonna pause for a second and I'll say that I'm gonna, let me do this, yeah.
All right, you do that. I'll just say Janet, thank you, or to whoever hyperlinks the Berry zoning so that it's easy to jump to where you want to go, because Montpeliers are not. So um, finding their parking minimums was not as easy.
Uh huh. Yes, I, I um, thank you for that compliment, Becky. When we got the document from the consultant. Um, I took the time to do that because I like you, like to be able to go right to it when I need to. Um, it's hard enough when you're flipping through paper. It's really nice digitally, right? So, good, good to know.
I, I love it also. Thank you. All right. All we got next is our normal end of meeting stuff. Um, I was thinking our next meeting is May eleventh. Does that fit with everybody else's understanding of calendars? All right.
You're correct.
Okay. Great, is that a, is that gonna work for people? Okie doke, well, that'll be our meeting then. Uh, all right, then we have staff updates. Sorry that we didn't have a real, uh, a real packet containing stuff. I think that Janet has been rather busy as usual. Um, but, you know, but part of the being busy is, is, is good news uh in terms of staff, right? So, I'll hand it over to you for, for the updates.
Yes, great segue, Michael. Yes, uh, I was able to hire a permanent administrator two weeks ago. Um, if any of you are familiar with the, for the folk, yes. The uh, the folks that operate the office of uh the Opera House. Um, Michelle, who was helping Cindy, was in the market to find a, a job that uh had benefits. And um, she was gonna apply for the meter position or some other position and I said, timeout. Come talk to me, because I think you would, you would excel at this, so. So, um, subsequently, she's, she's um, joined us at Berry City and uh she's an absolute joy. She's computer literate, she's intuitive, she gets it. I only have to show her how to do something once and she is running with the ball, so it's, it's exciting times. Um, but you all know, when you've trained people training actually takes up more time. Um, so, but we're getting there. And I just keep looking on the positive that uh things are slowly starting to shut off my plate onto Michelle's so that I can focus in on just grants and assessing and planning at the moment. So, good times for sure. Um, to that end, let's bring you up to date since we've met last. The DRB has been a little bit busy since the first of the year. Um, they heard uh, the Elks came in front of the DRB to want to add on a patio. They did not come prepared very well at all, even after it was tabled. So it was denied. And they came back this past month with a much better, complete, full application as if they are going to build it. So the DRB was all in favor of passing that. So, um, that got passed. Uh, DMS machine, I don't know if any of you are in, familiar with our industrial section of the city over on Boynton. Uh, DMS has been around a really long time. They've done a lot for the city. What they wanted to do was put up a very tall flagpole. Uh, almost twice the size of what, uh, height, sorry, is what is allowed. And so that was denied. And the other one was uh the Vermont Granite Museum. Uh, some of you may know its last tenant was the um, group fitness folks. They've since
The location, the, yeah. He said, he said the Vermont uh Granite Museum.
The Granite Museum at fifty-six Depot Square um, has become empty and uh one of the dentists in the Berry City uh was looking to buy it. So uh, the folks at the Granite Museum uh decided to subdivide and so that, that was a two-step process and that's now done. So the Granite Museum building area is one parcel and the parking lot, they have, will retain ownership and then they lease to the city. For uh, for money, obviously. And it's my understanding that um, this dentist up on Washington Street has put a deposit on the uh Depot Building. So that is moving ahead. So that's exciting. Uh, that building comes with nine parking spaces. Uh, a nice lawn, it's got a beautiful new sidewalk around it, all from the Enterprise Alley redevelopment. Uh, I'll bring you up to date on the Saint Monica's Appeal. Um, if you recall uh, the church came in front of the Development Review Board, asked to demolish the little bit building on West Street. They were denied. They appealed the decision. The DRB had the opportunity to hear it as if it was a brand new application since they'd done all the work they were supposed to do for the first time and the DRB was not interested. So I have a environmental court date of May twenty-fourth, May twenty-fourth. Um, to represent the city and we'll just go from there and see what happens. Yesterday, Michelle and I were able to drive around all over the city. I gave her some uh, a tour of what's going on. And I was able to get out and look at the backlog of, there's, I probably have a less than a handful of violations. Um, or alleged violations that people have reported to me that I have needed to address. Um, so it was good to get out and look at that. And so I'll be able to weigh that against the rules and respond finally to these folks. Um, wondering, you know, hey, I, I complained about this fence, what's going on? It has not gone off into the ether. It is still on my to do.
To talk about specifically.
I actually had three fence complaints, so. But regardless, it was good to get out and Michelle and I look at it and we can move forward on that stuff. And the only other thing I want to report that comes out of my office is um it's almost time to do the annual billing for the rental registry. Uh, which means we do a deep dive on the grand list to make sure we have captured as many structures that are being used as rentals or have rentals in them. We miss some every year. People rent out single family homes. So the list is always fluid, but uh with Michelle on board. She'll be able to do that and hopefully we'll meet my deadline to get that invoicing out for um, I think the third week of May. That and all the grant work that we've got going on in the city, um, we're all gonna be real busy and it's I think it's gonna be an exciting time to be a volunteer as well as me as a staff member. For sure. Thank you.
I'm excited. And thank you. All right, let's move on. I didn't know, have any questions for Janet? Sorry, I was gonna like move on, but, but, yeah. Okay, looks like a no. Um, next up is our roundtable. Did anyone have anything that they wanted to uh bring to the planning commission? Janet, what's up?
Well, this is, this is more business related. I just didn't want this to fall off the table since we don't have a line that says other business.
Um, right, should we have that?
It's, we, let's talk about that. Um, because this isn't really roundtable, but almost all of you, your term is up in the end of June. So everybody but Becky and David, your term expires this year. I've talked with the city manager about um, that there's a volunteer policy. Um, the reterming, if you want to, there's going to be a letter coming out to you from the manager's office. So everyone who I didn't name, if you're still interested, keep that in mind when you get your letter. Love to have you back. I love keeping the seven. Uh, it's nice to have a full planning commission. So thank you. That's it.
Anybody else? All right. Uh, in that case, um, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I will move that we adjourn our meeting.
Got a motion?
It was a good meeting. I'll, I'll second that.
All right, and a second. All in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
I see hands, ayes. All right, that's everybody. Uh, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Pass and we are adjourned. Have a great evening.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, Janet. Thank you.